Good morning, welcome to regular court session, September eleventh. We have a full quorum here, Katie certified, the minutes were probably posted. And we'll stand and let's start with prayer, Jane Dre and go to pledges.
In Isaiah, chapter forty-one and verse thirteen reads, for I, the Lord thy God, will hold thy right hand, saying unto thee, fear not, I will help thee. Father, coming from you that means a lot because you created this universe, you created this world. Father, we thank you for remembering us. Father, that we can come to you with any problem that we have. Father, we come today asking for the wisdom that's needed in the court and any decisions for the residents of Walker County. Father, we just pray that your hand be on this court, that you guide me, gentlemen. Father, we love you and thank you. In Jesus' name we pray.
Yeah, ten items on the consent agenda. We got any items, Paul?
I do not.
Let's accept the motion.
I'll make the motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
So, moving second to all, if you raise your hand, motion carries. Go to emergency management, we're gonna get an update from the Florida team on the fires first. Wayne, you're up.
Thank you, everyone.
Good morning.
If y'all will state your name for the minutes first.
My name is Leela Brunch, I'll spell it for you, L E L A, Brunch, B R A U N S C H. Public Information Officer for the Florida Forest Service.
Wayne Rushing, W A Y N E, Rushing, R U S H I N G.
And that is all the information.
There we go. So, I'm here to let you know, kind of, a lot of folks that wanna know why we're here and what our job duties are. So, when they call in a incident management team, we're assigned to acquire and we perform duties as suppression activities, firefighting, operations, monitoring and patrolling fire lines. And mechanical movement of fuel. But that means that we're for the safety of the residents and visitors and the fire as well. But that being said, I wanna introduce you to Wayne Rushing, he is the incident manager, incident commander.
Thank you, Leela. So, first off, we wanna, um, may thank you for all the support from the residents and the communities around. I mean, it's been outstanding from you guys, um, just to support that you've supplied with this equipment and manpower. We're really grateful for that. We've never been anywhere and been treated like we've been and this is second to none. It's, uh, it's gonna be hard to go anywhere else. I promise you that. Oh, we appreciate it. So, we'll start off with the game preserve. As you know, it's looking really good. Forty-four hundred twenty-eight acres, um, set ninety-five percent containment. Probably gonna hold it there for a little while to see, um, you know, this reburn potential and think everything looks good, but you know, there's always that question. Um, so we wanna make sure that we're doing our due diligence as far as working the crews and resources out there that we have, so. Um, the Gibbs, um, as you know, it caused a little bit of uproar a couple of days ago. Um, got a lot of resources out there on it, widening the lines, trying to make it where, uh, hopefully we don't have to worry about that again. Um, there is some reburn going on inside the burn, they'll see a little smoke, you'll, um, have a little concern, I understand. Yeah, but, uh, we got plenty of resources out there doing a lot of good work and, uh, you know, thank you for as well for the county, but that we've been able to use on that, so. Um, then the Collier two, which is a neighbor in county, uh, caused a lot of issues yesterday. We're managing that fire as well. Uh, we have a lot of resources on it today, a lot of air resources on it last night. Everything's starting to look really good on it. So, they're gonna hit it pretty hard today and we should be pretty much safe on this one. Alright, y'all have any questions?
I don't have any questions of y'all, but I mean, that guy in that shop yesterday, or lady, whoever it is, they are A-plus for putting that water over. I don't know how they get right there perfectly every.
Yep, that is.
Every long time.
Common, but there is some that may miss it pretty good. About three just out, yeah. We have some really good firefighter resource.
Well, and while y'all are on this, um, I had Sony put together a list of kind of everybody that was involved. So, it ended up being a very lengthy list. And, uh, you know, it, it's hard to thank everybody, uh, all of y'all for sure, uh, the fire departments, all of the VFDs were at the, at the game preserve fire, um, we had just an enormous amount of help. Um, I, Carrie was out there, her bunch was nine o'clock one night out there still making sandwiches, you know? Um, it, it was just, uh, it's, it's good to see the community come together, you know? I mean, we had people from Madisonville, um, down there at one point in time. Um, like I said, all y'all's bunch from Florida has been great to work with, the US Forest Service, Texas Forest Service, um, all OEM cert, they, they were, I mean, just outstanding as far as getting resources to everybody, so. I don't wanna go into a long list because I know we'd miss some people, um, so I'd like to thank everybody for me and Ronnie both because seems like both of them are always in our precincts or something.
Yeah. We're blessed with the fires.
Hey, I wanna echo that and.
I mean, we didn't lose, uh, we lost some deer camps, but we didn't lose a single house.
There's outstanding work that's been done and to see, and I know you've seen it, people to be outside of their normal duties to be able to fill, fill equipment with fuel or whatever it may be, if, man, that says a lot about you guys, it says a lot about your, your citizens in this county. I mean, that, that, you don't see that and we don't see that, so. We're very, very grateful for the hospitality that we've received so far.
Well, we appreciate y'all leaving your house and coming to help us.
Right, and we're glad to be.
Yeah, and you're welcome to Texas if you get tired of Florida.
The village tells me that. Thank you, guys.
Wayne, can, can you touch on just a minute on clearing up some issues that people put out there of why y'all took over the scene and how that relieves our locals to respond to the next?
Yeah, absolutely. Um, so, you know, we were, we were brought out here by the state enforcement force and, uh, because they're overwhelmed. I mean, there's a lot going on in your state. Um, Texas is very, very dry, so we came in as a C I M T, which is Critical Incident Management. That'll come in and, and manage your larger fires so the local resources can get some rest. Um, unfortunately, it hasn't worked out for much rest for them, but they're able to go on and take care of business elsewhere. So, we, we, you know, we're, we're assembled, we have some teams in Florida, we assemble out. We work for the state of Florida, work for the Florida Forest Service, um, and came out, this is typically what we do, is come out and, and manage these larger incidents. That's your question?
Yes, sir. Well, guys, we pride y'all over here today. We just honestly extremely honored to have y'all on our stick.
Okay, thank you. Meeting got any questions for them before they get out?
You know, you know, we've even had some folks from California. I don't particularly like California, but I've met some folks who's pretty nice. Yeah. So, a few of them.
Yeah.
Like we'll fight fire, anything.
Yeah.
Miss Howard wants a quick picture.
If you'll just stand back and I just.
Casey, come on up here.
Let's just stay on the side so you can see.
All right, we will peek out.
Yeah, we're fine.
I'm going away here.
Miss Howard, tell us where.
We gotta leave a gap.
There you go. She really is telling him.
Yep.
And she don't really need us. Pull me up, Miss Howard, I'm.
Hold, one, two, three, hold. Oh, thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, appreciate it.
Thank y'all. See y'all later. And we'll start number eleven, discuss and take action on OEM project fund purchases, Mr. Davis.
Project?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Alright, we, we would receive project money and it's from FEMA reimbursement that is, uh, administrative money that Jerry did most of the work on. I helped, she did most of the work, uh, and we have this project money, but I would like to follow the county purchasing procedure to spend this money and not have to bring it to court every time we want to purchase.
That sounds good to me. That was kinda my intent, I think, in the original, and, uh, we strayed some kinda way. But, y'all got any thoughts on it? Just as long as you follow the purchasing policy, I think that's the way it should be. I make a motion to that effect.
Cause we allocate that money when it, when we get the reimbursement, we, you know, he, he'll request, hey, can I have some of this? I have an idea of things I wanna do, so at that time, we're trying to say, and.
Yeah, I mean, as long as you follow the purchase policy, if it needs to come to us, it does anyway.
Yeah, yeah, well, if that's your motion, I'll second your motion.
Yeah, motion and second to all, if you raise your right hand. Motion carries. Number twelve, discuss and take action on paying H I S D for hurricane lower sheltering expenses in the amount of eighty-eight thousand eight hundred and forty-three dollars and eighty-four cents to being reimbursed by FEMA.
You've seen in your backup, you have a copy of the MOU that we got on that. And, and previous years, they've always had Huntsville be, the Huntsville I S D be their own, uh, applicant and, and in the LAR, uh, Hurricane in twenty-two, one, they decided FEMA decided passed through the state, uh, that they want them since they have a M O U that they, it come under the county deal and they want us to pay the school district and then they'll reimburse us. And we sent you the strain of, uh, emails that we had with the state, uh, on this and so requesting that we go ahead and pay Huntsville I S D and get our money back through, uh, FEMA.
Miss Patricia, where would we pull the money from?
Ms. Allen, yes?
Oh, I'm sorry, I was muted. Um, the money could come from project contingency.
And you would make sure that we don't let this fall through the cracks also?
I, I think OEM is, is working on that. I think the only question would be that if for some reason some of the money was denied, uh, how would that be handled?
I, I, in my thoughts, if something gets denied and we don't get reimbursed the full amount that we pay out to, uh, I S D, there needs to be an agreement that they give us that money back.
And we can get ahold of the I S D and see if they'll send us a letter to them.
I think that would be good.
Yeah.
I don't think that it's gonna be a problem because the project went all the way up to the top whenever the I S D submitted it and then FEMA changed their mind and said, no, it needs to come through the county, so, you know, we're talking about since twenty-twenty-one, so.
Yeah, I spent some long, I basically, I don't even remember.
They've been holding the money.
Trust me, we do.
I know y'all remember it, but it's, that's kinda.
Well, this was, was money that was, uh, I guess from sheltering and.
Sheltering, they had to pay overtime, they had to bring employees in, it on their payroll and, uh, labor that they, they turned in to FEMA to be reimbursed.
And we have all their documentation. I didn't wanna bother y'all with it because it's just, you know, time sheets and showing everybody's time, all the materials they purchased and food and all that stuff, but we do have it in our files.
Well, I knew they were cooking for people and all that, so.
Yeah, and I, and I guess the part about if they don't get reimbursed for it, we're gonna ask the money back. That one, I'm not really, I'm not really keen on that one because, you know, we call them and they open the doors to us at a moment's notice. And this is, if they've given you paperwork, they're showing actual expenses, so I'm just like, we, we pay them and we turn the paperwork in, what we get back, we get back. It's still cheaper than finding another place for them to go. Because the school, if I'm the school, like that could be up one of those hard field deals and you're like, sorry, we're busy this time, then you got a problem.
Yeah, that, that's kinda my thoughts too, because if we actually are the ones that initiated them.
Yeah, we called them.
It's our bill.
Yeah.
Yeah, I regret that they opened, opened as a shelter.
Well, and, and, and we, this should be the last one. I mean, we've ceased doing that, right?
Yeah, we don't, we don't, uh, go to the school district and sheltering, uh, y'all go past it, that we open the storm shelter when we get to a hundred and fifty lights no longer on in our home and that's all we're gonna shelter.
Yeah.
I'm better with that.
I'm good with that, yeah. If we, if, if there's anything left, then we take it off.
I'll make the motion to approve agenda number twelve as presented then.
So.
Moving second to all, if you raise your right hand.
I just wanted to give you some information, last Friday, our app went live on, if you have a smartphone, you have a dumb phone like Commissioner Whitehead.
Thank you, Butch.
You put it on your iPad.
If you go to your app store, either on iPhone or Android and go to Walker County O E M T X, uh, the app will come up and, uh, you can follow us on your app on your smartphone.
We are still building it. There's some things that you'll go into, this is coming soon to that effect, but, you know, as we see what we need on there, then we'll.
Then y'all are gonna have like a rollout plan for that, right? We're gonna try to get that out.
Yes, we're gonna, we're gonna, it just come, it went live last Friday and I wanted to let the court know that it is live and we're going to put it out to the media and we'll put it out down in wide and put it on Facebook.
Do you have your little Q R code thing already made? Is, it's already there? Okay, so I mean, I, I think that's important that once we have it, that we can get it out to everybody. I mean, there's a whole lot of ways to reach a lot of people and I think we just need, I don't know, I talked to the guy that was helping you put it together and he's, he's supposed to help you with that, but um, like even now, putting your Q code, Q R code on your OEM page would be, I think it'd be a plus, get it off our, nobody goes to our county website. I don't go to our county website. And, um, then just stick it on your Facebook page and get that Q R code and I'll help you, I'll share it and help you spread the word out there too, so, thanks, guys.
Well, and, and again, thank y'all for the fire y'all have put in enormous amount of.
Yeah, I know, I see y'all go out there, you know, and see the judge out there.
The, the certain teams, you know, people don't realize all that stuff is voluntary, you know, and people are given enough time to come out and help them. And it's not just during the day. I mean, they're, they're all time of night, so.
We can call our certain team anytime and, you know, they're, they're right there, yeah, most of them.
Yeah.
Some of them are retired, but there's a lot that, you know, still work full-time and, you know, so whenever they can devote their time and after hours, whatever, they come out.
Appreciate it.
Thank y'all.
Yeah.
We kept you out all weekend too, Butch. I know you did, cause I seen you.
Constable precinct four, number thirteen, discuss and take action to purchase a new light bar package for our current control vehicle, Mr. Marty.
Trying to say paper, I got this electronic, cause we're talking, what?
You on it? On the screen too.
It's on the twenty-twelve, Tyler. Uh, I inherited, several years ago, uh, light bar started malfunctioning. Last year, year before last one, we changed out, we had a found an old controller, installed it, it worked for a few months, went away. Uh, recently found another used part and installed it in part and then after it was installed, another part of the light bar quit working, so. Uh, as I say, it's eleven years old, almost twelve. And this light bar, it'll, the other one lasted eleven, twelve years, it doesn't last that long. This car is set to be replaced, we'll order it, new budget.
You'll take the light bar off and you'll replace it, right?
Yeah. That's right. Only thing, the only thing new we'll have to buy, they were different mountain brackets.
Yeah.
That's it, so it's able to move on.
Well, you know, over the last two weeks, you know, I gotta say something, actually. Nothing, nothing against you, but those light bars on their vehicles at night inside these fire lines are blinding as heck to all of us. And it makes us say thanks to some of them guys that they finally cut it off.
I, I agree, you know.
All this new technology, this L E D.
Yeah. I'm also, uh, Commissioner Whitehead, you remember I was fighting fire collectively for twenty-two years?
Yes, sir, yes.
Uh, and as a chief, assistant chief, I used to tell guys when we get to a point, we can cut them lights off. You know.
They're learning that again.
When you get, you can cut them lights off, but certain instances, they need to be left on. But anyway, yeah.
I just had to say that, you know, before I give you a motion about your light bar.
I asked you to pop that chair earlier, the chair's working, so.
That's my motion.
Moving second to all, if you raise your right hand.
Alright, you do.
Motion carries. Fourteen, discuss and take action on, on the install, new service window for J P three to be funded through facilities projects, Larry?
The last of the projects. I received a message from Miss Allen that we wanted to move forward, getting additional quotes. This is looking at seventy-six hundred dollars even to install a twin window, twin window at the. It would include one, one-eighth laminated glass, um, counter drop through and a new countertop to come out into the hallway to match what's there already.
We didn't already have something out there in place there or not?
They have a single window now, but they requested this because they have two clerks.
Okay. I was thinking we'd done something for them once before, yeah.
Yeah, sir, it's been several years since they did that one, but, and all that was done on the last project there was to upgrade the glass to return impact glass. Yeah, there's not enough room at the one window for the two clerks to work at service, so.
Okay.
They've been walking around the hallway and.
Okay.
Yeah. I'll, I'll give you the motion to do the seventy-six hundred dollar window.
I'll second that, I'll second that.
Moving second to all, if you raise your right hand, motion carries.
Thank you, Bert.
Number fifteen, discuss and take action on the adoption of, of the twenty-twenty-three sheriffs and constable fees for compliance with the Texas State Comptroller's Office. Eric?
This is an annual renewal that we do every year. These are the constable fees for the, uh, foreclosures, things of that nature that go on. And as of now, there are no changes to what the current schedule is that'll be effective October one.
I'll make the motion to approve agenda fifteen as presented.
Moving second to all, if you raise your right hand. Motion carries. Number sixteen, discuss and take action on record management plan, records archival, archival fee, vital records fee and record management and preservation fee.
Just a quick, um, PowerPoint overview, y'all, I feel like y'all like kinda getting an update as we do these fee changes and stuff like that. The private inventory of the records of the county clerk's office. In case some of you don't know, we do maintain records in three mediums. One is paper, uh, which is books, file folders and, and things of that nature. Second is microfilm and then, and the third is digitized images. We have records dating back to eighteen forty-six. Until nineteen eighty-six, records were separated in different volumes rather than filed in the official record. Prior to nineteen eighty-six, the record was separated by volume such as mechanics, lien deed, record deeds of trust. Now they're all in one book, so it's a lot easier for the public to view. And this is just kind of a summary of what we have going on and what is digital as of now.
That's awesome.
The plan summary, the majority of our records are paper-based and used daily by the public. When storing records, the critical things to think about are compliance with the Texas State Library retention schedules, preservation and, and replacement of the archival methods. These processes are, are used to ensure the documents are safe from deterioration for generations to come. Solutions to these challenges require us to have a sound records management plan and archive plan. With no cost of the county, these records can be preserved by using the records management and archive fees collected to cover the costs of us scanning these paper-based documents and preserving the hand ones by encaps, encapsulation. In addition to preserving these documents, these images are added to our existing system, which has made the, made it a lot easier for the public to access. They don't always have to come in here to make copies. They can actually pull a lot of this information up on their home computer and print it off, so it's proven to be a big benefit. This is just an overview of the projects completed. Uh, for those of you new on court, the first front photo is what the fourth floor used to look like. The second floor is what it looks like now. This is gonna be a lot of our case management storage, um, a lot easier access for our clerks by having to pick up books. And it's also allowed us a lot more space for future growth. The third picture on the top is what the deed ring used to look like and the bottom picture is what it now looks like. So, we've, uh, come a long way on getting these books where they're at. The laws governing this, um, the county clerk's archive, local government code section one eighteen point oh two five. This is the fee for records archive and it is a designated go back to laws, okay. It is a designated account for the county clerk. Um, it allows the county to assess a fee up to ten dollars for the preservation of older records, followed with the county clerk. The vital fee, the health and safety code one ninety-one point oh oh four five. Uh, their Bureau of Vital Statistics may charge fees for providing services to the public with maintaining the vital statistics system. The county clerk may collect a fee not to exceed one dollar for preservation of vital records. And the records management, local government code section one eighteen point oh two one six. This is designated and is to be used only for specific management and preservation, including automation. This is an overview of the records management account. Uh, currently, this is through July first of twenty-twenty-three. Some of the expenses that you see on the previous years were the preservation that we have worked on. We have roughly three hundred forty-nine thousand in the account with the projections of what we're gonna spend and what we're gonna bring in for twenty-twenty-four. We're looking at about three hundred seventy-five thousand in that account. Excellent. Excellent.
Interesting stuff, I'm quite a bit.
These aren't interesting.
You get answers down here.
Oh, yeah, sorry. That one is the archive ones. Maybe they both are. My bad. I apologize. Uh, the archive one, um, currently have about two hundred sixty-seven thousand in the account. Projected to be about three hundred eighty-seven with income next year. So at the end of. This year going into next year, we're looking at about seven hundred fifty thousand that we can use. On the projects that we have for the clerk's office. And just in case y'all don't know, seven hundred fifty thousand is a lot of money. And we've been hoarding this stuff since October of twenty thirteen, but to preserve one book, you're looking at close to five to six grand. That's where they go in and they take the pages out. They make sure it's bug free. They put solutions on it and then they encapsulate it. So the process is very expensive on what we still have left. This is an overview of what's been accomplished. Uh, phase one. We had a lot of the books were done and a map was done, indexes were done. Phase two, kind of same thing. Phase three, we got into the rest of the land records and into the commissioner court minutes. What we're starting into now is more of the vital records, it's a name cattle brands. DBAs, uh, birth, death, marriage, because all of that stuff is permanent record. And again, all of this is being able to be done without having to raise the tax rate or come to y'all and ask y'all for a lot, for a book of the money.
Awesome.
So I'm asking for y'all's, y'all's approval of us to be able to keep going forward with this for the. Records management fee at ten, the vitals at a dollar and the archive at ten, which would be a fact that we're one. Any questions?
Hmm, not for me.
Well, no question, but I'll, I'll make a statement that very few of us get to do anything that lasts forever. And your stuff lasts forever. So in the future, they'll look back and at this time and say, that was pretty major. So congratulations on what y'all are doing down there. And I'll make the motion to approve it in item number sixteen presenting.
We did not put a funding source, James.
And, and there again too, it's, it's also a program that some, doesn't cost the taxpayer anything. It's, it's a. A fee imposed on that, um, uh, benefits the longevity and, and catching up with all this.
All right, all right, motion and second all, if anyone raised your hand. Most cares. We're going to go back up to number thirteen. And we'll get a new motion. We forgot to do a funding source on that.
Patricia, you out there?
I thought it was coming out of his.
Yes, I am.
Did you say your budget, Jane? You didn't say your budget, did you?
Sir?
This light bar?
What?
You need the funding for that light bar? Or do you have it in your budget?
I need the funding.
That's what I'm saying. Okay. Uh, where are we pulling it from, Patricia?
General fund contingency.
All right, I'm going to include that in my motion to approve from general fund contingency.
Moving, saying it all, if anyone raised your hand.
I'm just trying to help you, Jane.
Thank you, sir.
Number seventeen, discuss weigh station located in Walker County.
I had this put on there because I do have several concerns. Uh, one of them, we're not going to talk about today because I didn't get the information due to all the fires we've been on lately. And I'm still waiting on some information to come back to that. But one of the other things that, that concerns me basically is I've been hearing from a lot of people down south that this court is looking at closing the weigh station. Uh, that's one of my concerns. Uh, if it is, then we need to have a court discussion and not be getting all these phone calls. Uh, the positive side of it is, do I want to close the weigh station? No, I do not. You know, there's a benefit to it. You know, the, the safety on the roads is very important of these trucks going up and down the road. And I can tell you from my experience of being just me locally in Walker County without them here. My stuff is not very legal at all. And I look legal now, but that don't mean I'm legal in their eyes, but I do look a lot better when I run down the road. So. So it's, it's a very important need. I mean, uh, and, and I know New Waverly has some issues because I've talked to Brandon a little bit on the phone over town about the weigh station.
Yeah.
But tha- that's a discussion that I guess you need to bring back to the court or whatever, but. You know, i- i- if there is any talk about closing it, then this court needs to be involved in the entire conversation. That's what I'm saying.
Sure.
You know, but, and I, I don't know if there is or not. I mean, it's just been a lot of phone calls for not to be something behind it somewhere. So. So I, I'm not sure if it's anybody on this court or not, but I know it's not me.
Well, and I'll agree with it, you know, uh, for years, the, the funding has been down on it. And we seem to look at the funding. All the time, but the presence of them down there is, is a blessing in itself. They're a. What, right at quarter of a mile from a school, you know, and you've got. You know, eh 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 eh, at back door at all times. Um, you know, they have a tough job to do right now. Um, it's a very tough job because. They're also getting sent to the border. They're getting sent to Austin. They're getting sent to Dallas, you know? And they have no control over that. Um, and, uh, so it does affect. Some of our funding, you know, there's, there's ways we could twist and tweak with that because, you know, I mean, we budget for a certain amount. Um, they hadn't met that amount in years and, uh, you know, as long as fund balances in good shape, we always covered. Um, maybe we need to adjust on that end.
I know we've been dialing it back.
If, if we're, if we're worried about what it looks like as far as the funding source.
Yeah.
Um, and, you know, but as far as a presence down there, you know, you've got two officers and sergeant, you know, uh, down there. Hopefully most of the time, but I mean, they're pulled every direction and they have no control over it. So, so, and it's going on statewide. You know, you can go South Texas and see fifteen or twenty of them and you get up there on our state highways and see hardly any, you know, and, and, uh, that's not. Not right to me. Um, they're here to, to protect our highways and, uh. Uh, and licenses weight is here for the commercial vehicles, but that's not the case right now and, and out of our control, I would assume.
Yeah, when, when I first come here, I mean, the funding was pretty high from, uh, from that. And, and it's never been about the funding to me. It's always been about enforcement and safety on our roads.
Well, it, it, it did help years ago, uh, you know. Some, I know Brandon's been here long enough to remember a lot of that stuff. I mean, we built a lot of bridges with the money that they generated. Uh, and, and replaced a lot of dry, uh, culverts and, and crosses, you know, big creek.
A lot of bridges.
Yeah, yeah. And, and so it was a positive thing at the time.
That side over there, did it?
It, it has. I didn't call names because I, I'm one over here on this side, but nevertheless, uh. It benefited Walker County as a whole and it was a good program and, uh, you know, it, it has, it has slacked up and. That's all right, you know, that's, that's our problem. It's not theirs.
Right.
Their job is to keep the highway safe and, and, um, uh, make sure that we don't, you know, have as many casualties bricks as we would. As many commercial vehicles as we have running about for it by.
Yeah. The discussion I've had with quite a few people is just the amount of traffic that it produces, um, in the south. Um, we have a abundance of commercial vehicles that run up and down right through our little town and we have a traffic problem anyways. But, uh, all the subdivisions coming in, um, you know, more homes, more people, we just, it. Uh, we had a meeting this morning with our representative down there and to get hands-on knowledge of what's going on. Uh, to see it, to, to stand there in the middle of town and just watch the traffic and, uh. The, the, the weigh station does add to that, no doubt. There's, there's, there's plenty of eighteen winters come through there. So. Um, that's been a discussion that I've had, uh, with, with different various people. I think we had one last week, last court say, you know, that they wish it would be closed down. I understand it is a revenue fund, uh, revenue stream. Uh, it does cause problems, but it also has its benefits and has its merits as well. Um, so I, I've got to work with those guys. They're, they're one of the things that, you know, we take care of as a precinct, you know, uh. They maintain it, uh, Larry and maintain it. We do some other things down there as needed. So. That's just a part of, 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 of our community and, uh, we'd always like to make our community better, no matter what we do.
Yeah, and I understand all that. I mean, I honestly do. But we, we got more of a problem in Huntsville than we've ever had to try to go to town at five o'clock.
Right, sure.
It's out. I mean, you can't do it or up in the morning. I mean, you can't get through them intersections. So I just go early or late. I bypass, but the, the parents carrying the kids to school, they got to get there on time.
Right.
Now, so it's, it's an issue for all of us.
Yeah.
Uh, you know, and then you seen me down there this morning because I was just kind of looking to see what you're talking about.
Yeah.
But at seven o'clock, what did it look like then?
Backed up.
Was it because of the trucks or, or trucks and the traffic mix?
Com- combination of everything, you know, it's not just one thing. You couldn't just do one thing to make it better. Um, you know, that's, we're working with Tech Stop to get more lanes, more, uh, signals, uh. You know, that's the whole point of having the representative sell down there this morning to show him. I mean, when you take one fifty coming in from San Jacinto County. And it's backed up for two miles this morning on a just a normal morning. You know, we've, we've got traffic problems and there's a lot of eighteen winters that come that way, but there's a lot of houses. I mean, y'all know the one fifty corridor is the one that's getting. The most subdivisions, y'all have seen the manners, uh, each creek to deer forest, uh, um, some other properties that have been bought and they're working on. That, that we've already had a contact with and it's just going to get worse.
Yeah, where, where's the city involved in this stuff? How they're involved?
City's been at every meeting that we've had.
Yeah.
So they're on board to do whatever, to help us. Um, we're looking at, you know, maybe trying to do. Getting a little wet far from the wait station, but maybe trying to do a transportation study. That's what the state's requesting us, but those are very priced.
Well, there's still wait station requi- I mean, tied in because of the traffic, but so I don't see why we can't discuss it a little bit, but, uh. I, I don't know. I, I seem to think they ought to be the lead dog because it is in the city of New Waverly.
Yeah, I think so.
You know, that's just kind of where it is. And it's a state highway and, and the trucks have a right to be there.
Yeah.
I mean, there's no reason for them not to go through New Waverly if they don't want to go through there. If they do, they just drive through there, but. We have nothing to stop them from going through New Waverly. There's no law or anything in effect at this point, you know, so.
Correct.
Unless, yeah, I, I don't know what the city can and can't do, but I mean, the city of Huntsville can send you around.
Yeah. So we went down that road with the, uh, with the truck route with the city and I, I say we went down that road just because I was involved in the meetings. The city has went down that road trying to get a truck route established through town. That way you deter your traffic around town. Problem is, is. You got a cross section and the city limits like, the, the biggest thing that would help would have a, 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 a truck sign in Montgomery County.
Right.
Where the trucks would have to get on I forty-five at Shepherd Hill, right? So put a truck route sign there. Um, Tech Stop said, if y'all do this study, we'll go forth. The city put money in, did the study, had the engineers come up with it. Everything looked good. At, we got to the very end and they said, oh no, we can't do this because it's not. Uh, the, the city didn't have any jurisdiction outside of the city on the state road. So we're working with our legislature to try to figure that out or change that or get us a, some kind of way that we can do it. Because it is out of, it's out of the county. It's in Montgomery County where that entrance is.
Right.
Which they were for. They didn't have, they, they sent letters of approval. They, they're, they're okay with it. But the, but after the city spent all that money to have that engineering done on that particular deal, the state come back and said, no, we can't do that. So the city has a vested interest. They have been putting money forward, but that's why we don't have a, 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 a truck route through town now. Now, if y'all remember back, um, several months ago, we did the oversized, uh, load limits. At a certain time during peak traffic.
Did that go forward or not?
We did real good. The city, uh, we did ours on, on the state roads up to the city limits and the city limit. The city did theirs within the city limits. It's worked great. And we have the rush hour traffic with the. School traffic from seven to eight in the morning and from three to five in the afternoon, all those big loads are deterred. They're, they're not allowing them through there. Quentin helped us, uh, 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 formulate some of that stuff and got it over there and it's worked wonderfully. So. Grateful for that.
Yeah, well, like I say, I, I go back to this. I mean, I know it's a problem, but they have a right to be there unless we can figure out how to make them go around it. Those trucks have a right to come through there too. So I believe in my rights.
Sure.
So if I want to drive a truck through there, I should be able to do it. I mean, your local people are doing it anyway.
Sure.
You know, so why, why can't the other, we want to deter them only? I mean, that's what we're looking at doing.
Yeah.
You know, so figure out how to make it legal where they have to go around us.
Yeah, and, and I, I'm, I'm, I'm glad it's something because I got, I was getting the same calls. In fact, I visited with him last week about getting. Calls and what was going on down there. So, um, I think, I'm with you. There, until there's a law that says they can't, it kind of stinks, but. They can go through there and I think it, the, the city should be the lead dog on the thing. At least they're in the conversation. It sounds like they are. Okay, so they should be the lead dog on the thing and we should be, I'm, I'm all for supporting them and helping them, but I don't know that we have a financial interest. In anything down there. If it's like, say it's a state highway going through a city. That's the two entities that should be talking when it gets down to the plan. But, um. And I, and I think, I don't know how much information y'all was talking to could provide to us via a little FYI. Because I think we need to know if the conversation is, hey, we're going to go down there and say, we need, we want to close this weigh station down. Um, we need to, we need to know that, if that's a conversation, because I think we need to meet up here prior to that. And say, what is the opinion of the court? What do y'all think of that idea? Can we send these people down there with the, the mindset of leave it like it is? That's the opinion of the court. Or can y'all just say, hey, I'm just, I'm just Brandon. I'm just Colt. I'm just whoever, just regular Joe citizen. And just reiterate through the conversation, you know, this is my opinion. It's not the opinion of the court. So that's, I think that's important at that conversation is that. We don't represent whoever's media. I'm, I'll just say you because you're sitting down there. You know, you don't say, hey. Walker County wants to close that wait station because that's not the case. It may be the case, but you don't know that's the case. Or hey, we'll, we'll help y'all move it north of town. Well, that may not be the case because we may not want to move it north of town. It may, it may happen. But there's things that if you're going to go down there and look for a position to talk to them about, that we could come up here and visit a period at the court level and say. We could entertain this or we could talk about that, but we have no interest in this or that. Um, or like I say, just fall back to this is just my conversation. It's not, I still got to go get two other votes to make this happen. And they hear that where they go other places too. So I mean, I do that, but when I talk to groups and some, you know, it's just me and I got to have a couple of more. So, um. Anyway, um, I guess it, I guess it just is what it is right now until they figure out what's going on down there. When you talk about safety in the trucks and, and, and making our community better.
Mm-hmm.
If a truck was safe and he didn't have any problems, he'd stay on forty-five.
That's not necessarily true.
Most of them.
I still, I'll disagree with you on that.
Well.
But just the aggravation of being stalled out for a while is, is enough to make me go around the wait station if I'm a hundred percent legal.
Most of the ones, I, I, I'm just assuming here, this is, again, this is not the court. This is just my thoughts. You sit down there and you watch trucks coming through with paper tags, different stuff going on.
Yeah.
There's a pretty good reason why they're, they're avoiding that wait station.
Yeah.
And there might be. The wait, the, the, the amount of time that you're going to have to wait at the wait station. Uh, when they open up the lights and then close them, you know, they open up, turn the lights on, they'll get a few, then you'll go by. The, they, they spend more time getting off seventy-five, coming through there, sitting in town, especially during traffic, peak traffic times. And, and getting back on forty-five and they would if they were to, to go through it.
Not if you want the ones they pull in there and inspect and you sit right there for an hour waiting on them to inspect you. I take my chances going around. I may be wrong, but that's where I would be.
I see both sides of it. I mean, I was down there, went to Mustang and picked up some parts of the day and, uh, they had it open and they were lined up. Way outside, three lane, you know, two lanes wide or whatever it is going in there, all the way out back to the highway. So. It is a time consuming. I mean, when you have, I, I think, you know, two officers down there at the most and four or five, uh, inspectors. Um, it, it, it takes time to go through all that stuff and it is an inconvenience, but, uh, you know, i- it's part of it, you know? Used to, they had enough help to, uh, sit in town and pull vehicles over.
Right.
Um, that is not the case right now. It, it may be in the future. I have no idea, but it's, it's not the case. So. Um, you do get a lot of people that skirt the, uh, skirt scales, you know, and, uh. Take your chances just like they do going through the scale house.
Yeah.
Uh, it's, it's, it's kind of a catch twenty-two, you know?
And you know, at the end of the day, you're right, when we first.
There's no law against going around it.
No, no, that's what I'm saying. I mean, it, they're all public roads, so.
Yeah, when we were making four hundred thousand a year, it was, everybody was.
Oh yeah, everybody was happy sitting. Entire core, you know, of course you weren't up here, Brandon, but.
Yeah.
Tim was here and all that and all that money was great, you know, and all that good stuff, but that's, that's probably not going to never come back to the level it was.
And really, I think that's a testament to why it's there, you know, at the end of the day, it's, it's, it's cheaper to fix your truck than it is to pay the ticket.
Yeah.
So it'd be nice if they didn't write a single ticket. It'd be, you know, we pulled over five thousand trucks last month and everybody was safe and legal. That'd be an awesome day. So, um, and that's a, it's a, a, had to be a goal when they fought, started was to drive down the unsafe trucks. And I think. The money says they're doing that and the number of citations, I guess, shows they're doing that and hopefully, hopefully the roads are safer. So I, I mean, I, I feel for y'all. Huntsville used to be that way until the freeway went in out there on the side. They used to come right.
Yeah, I mean, I feel your pain. Don't think I don't.
All the way down to Seventeenth Street coming through town back.
Well, and even, even on the north side, you know, when the scale houses out there before this was built.
Yeah.
You know, they, it was on the north side of town and, and. You know, they were, it was on the north side of town and and Hindale Road. I mean, it was like I forty five, you know, because that was the way Black Roger Road, the skirt to scale. And uh.
Browners.
Part of it, you know?
Hawthorne, four nights, yeah.
Yeah. So I I I guess, I guess to kind of pick up your engine there or whatever would be just. Um, it, I think it's important that we know, that I know, anyway. If it gets more than just a discussion, if things start, if a plan starts falling into place, then I think we need to be part of that plan.
No, I agree a hundred percent.
That's my only, that's my closest.
Yeah, that's kind of where I'm at, you know, I mean, I I know there's been a lot of talk. Because I've got the calls and I know some of y'all probably have, but.
Yeah.
Reality of this, a lot of us probably just talk.
Yeah.
But when you get, when you get a lot of talk and it just keeps coming, there's generally something behind it somewhere.
Yeah.
So that's that's generating that talk and that's kind of why I put it on here. Of course, part of what I want to talk about, I don't have the information yet, but we'll put it there.
Sure. James and Gene got anything?
Constable, you want to comment? You always do.
I wouldn't pass up the chance.
I didn't think you would.
For one, it it. The the trucks, I watched it for years. Okay, yeah, there's guys that go around the scale because they don't want to sit in line. But, you know, you sit and look at, i- if it looks like a dub, it's a dub. When the truck comes by and you see the bear tires, all that stuff. They don't just avoid the way station by coming, jumping off the shepherd hill. There's trucks that come up seventeen twenty five or fifty nine, up to one fifty, take a ride to the light and go get on forty five. Uh, I don't know, several years ago, when there was a bunch of troopers here, I got to stop at some of those trucks and check in their. Uh, what you call it there, building. Uh, those trucks are coming from Baltimore area, should have been going up fifty nine. But there's a way station on fifty nine up or around Tana Hall somewhere. So those trucks, if they got to get off in uh. Cleveland and come up seventeen twenty five and one fifty, they wait and take a ride to the light, they've avoided two way stations. They go on up forty five and then get back off, go east off of it. When a way station's open, it's not only uh impacting the state roads, it didn't, it didn't impact some of our county roads. Because that way station's open, they come up seventeen twenty five, they're gonna catch Hawthorne. Go over to to uh thirteen seventy five, some of them take a right and go around and go four nights to them to a meal. Some of them go and take a left and go up to twenty seven ninety three and hit seventy five and then go back. Uh, just so it 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 impacts not just the state roads in the community, it impacts our county road as well. Um, and we talk about, you know. Fogging up areas you mentioned Huntsville. Yeah, Huntsville is.
It's awful.
It's it's old. Uh, the the thing of the problem in New Way is there's only two main veins. You know, you need to go seventy five in or out of town, north or south, or are you gonna go east? You gotta go one fifty. So it whenever they, and it's not just a way station, okay? It's not just a way station impacting New Way. It's. In the morning, the school traffic at seven ten, traffic loads up at seven fifty, it's. In the afternoon, it's three ten to three fifteen to two minutes or three uh, three fifty, it's dark. But you have way station open at time, you got, and you have one, the great thing we got done was that wide load. It seemed like it never failed. Once a month, there'd be a wild, a super wide load, hit New Way at two o'clock and get hung. On one of the lines. And then, you know, we got school traffic deal. It's not just a way station, it's not just, well, we knew, we're trying to get tech text out today. I say, we, I'm in on the meeting just about direct traffic. I I don't have a. Bunch of anything. We trying to get them to do some more things, simple things. I got them to extend the, that the uh length of the light. That westbound light at one fifty by ten seconds and it made a huge difference, our track. From thirty seconds to forty seconds, made a huge difference. And we've been telling them for months, years, if you give us a left turn, you know, he. There's, they're finally, we got their ear, they're listening, they're looking. Uh, the city's there involved, Brandon's been there supporting them, you know, because we've been in talks for years.
Been in talks ever since I've been sitting up here.
Yeah. Well, I was on city council up until two thousand and seven. And every time we would talk to them about something, it's, we need to do a traffic study. They should have a room of traffic studies over this, you know, four foot tall. But they've finally done some things in the last five years that's made a little difference, but. Uh, there's still a lot of work to be done, a lot of things to be done, and they're really looking, listening a whole lot better now, seems to be. But.
Well, like I say, I feel your pains, but I'll just go and say this, I do everything I can to avoid those way stations. That's just me. Even if I'm a hundred percent legal, I'm gonna go around them.
Oh. And it's not so much the fact that they're running around because they're illegal, we get that. Uh, I I mean, I, as a police officer, I understand that, you know, not every truck that comes through there is illegal. Uh, probably find something wrong with it. Uh.
That's just in general, right?
It is. But the fact is, that is one component of a problem we have then. Is the way station's open to contribute to our, our problem down there.
Well, and 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 going back to it though, it 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 is part of the problem, but it's not enough to justify shutting it down.
I don't, I don't know what that's all about, I mean, uh. You know, it you, there's one thing about it, uh. There's, there's days that uh they had, they were lots of trucks and there's lots of days where ain't nobody. Because, as you said numerous times, no, no control, no, they have no control over that. But the fact that uh to count on them to be that, we say, oh, they're right there behind the school, count on them. That that's, at one time it was, there'd be three troopers over and one out on seventy five, it worked. Hadn't been that bad since this border crisis started. We all know that's why. So who knows when those numbers will come back over there, be helpful. So I hope soon that I'm, I can see those guys that go down, honestly.
Yeah.
Anyway, that's my two cents for it. Thank you for letting me talk.
Hey, I appreciate it, Jane. You know I want to hear from you.
I know.
Judge Cole, you gang thanks?
No, sir, I don't.
Okay, fine. Anybody else?
Last chance. Will, you want to say anything?
Well, I mean, since I've.
You look like you got something on your mind. I was.
Well, since I took office in nineteen, the numbers were already down, um. We're not getting the the volume that I I've heard it did exist back when you were talking about when I sell and then we're on court, um. You know, we we can prosecute what they give us. Um, a lot of the, you know, it on as far as these cases go, usually we'll have a package from a, from an eighteen wheeler that's. Out of compliance and, you know, we'll nail them on a couple and dismiss a couple. But we don't have a, it's not the volume of individual cases that we used to have and Quentin knows more about that too. And he saw it when it was a little bit bigger volume and it's seen it go down, but if they don't have people manning it regularly. The fogging's not there, no matter what we do. Um, so, um. But even if they, if they do start manning it and they do start writing more or tickets, uh, we will prosecute.
Yeah.
And I got people that can do it. We we could get it done. But right now, we it just in the volume that it that it was at one time. So the numbers are down and I do agree with you, the purpose of traffic safety laws are. Or protect the public.
Yeah, there's the enforcement part of it.
A good size deal is money. I agree, and I wish we could do both and with sufficient. You know, cases coming our way, those numbers would go up, but some of that's out of our control just because of the border prices and the amount of. Uh, officers that are regularly working it. So.
You had mentioned something about dismissing some tickets. Can you tell me what types y'all would dismiss as far as these safety violations?
Do what?
Oh, no, and you got a button with it, yes. Yeah, you got a button. Thank you, Quentin.
And whether it's class C or felony in district court, prosecutorial discretion rules today, the oath we take is to do justice. Our oath is not to get a conviction, it's not to levy a fine, it's not to imprison somebody in prison. Our job is to do justice. Many times, that involves sending somebody to prison or levying a fine against them. And so that's, but that's, that rules what we do and there is uh. No doubt that sometimes, as Mr. Durham just mentioned, sometimes it's part of a package deal, we'll dismiss a case. Because they pled on a different case and we do that all the time. The other day, in district court, they moved eighty five cases. In one day, wow, eighty five cases in one day. Probably. Ten of those, maybe fifteen of those were dismissals. There were some twelve forty fives, that's a legal term. All kinds of things went in there, but we moved eighty five cases and a whole lot of seventeen, eighteen people still gonna go to the pants. They're gonna spend some time there. So we do that kind of stuff, whether it's in district court or in JP court, all the time. There's another caveat to JP court that doesn't exist in in county court law and district courts. They have a process called deferred adjudication. The JP courts, the judge is familiar with this, they have a process preferred uh called deferred disposition. A deferred disposition means that the person pleads not guilty, or pleads guilty or no contest. They pay some kind of fine, they have to go some length of time and comply with certain conditions. At the end of that time. Their case is dismissed. So when you run a report and shows dismissals. Many of those, I know I did it for years, many of those, they were not a straight dismissal. They were in fact a deferred disposition. The status is reported as dismissed. If it's a commercial driver, two things happen. One, he paid some money, so that helped your revenue, which I don't like talking about. But that helped your revenue. The other thing is, he ended up with points on his federal CSA. And you guys that have your CDLs know how important that is. So there were consequences there. So. That's, that's part of the deal. So don't look at a list of dismissals and think that. There were no consequences. There very well could have been. But also the fact is, prosecutorial discretion, sometimes we look at a case and it's just not the right thing to make that person be convicted. So those are, those are some factors that go into it. I did, I handled that court for a long time. I saw the volume going down. That is not a problem or that's not caused by the sergeant. He's not at fault on that. We all know what the reason for that is. I would say that the percentage of dismissals stayed consistent throughout that train. I I reevaluated every six to nine months on what kind of offers I was making. Durham has made me his first assistant. I spend time visiting with all of my line prosecutors about their medials. We're gonna continue to reevaluate. But I don't think the percentage of dismissals have markedly changed over the years. At least they did while I was there. I had four different orders in that court in the last two years, so. And it's C D O law. So I'm doing my best to change, we'll continue to evaluate on that. But as I have said to this court, or some of you on this court, on more than one occasion, it's not our concern about your revenue. It's a ten.
And it's not mine either.
I mean, that's just something you can't.
Well, and 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 kind of since we've done got this far into the, you know, um. Years ago, before Sergeant Adams was down there, uh, Sergeant Gray was down there and I was not very popular with Sergeant Gray. Uh, because I dug into, well, for one, we had to buy a set of scales and, um, you know, that was kind of. Porced on us. Um, but I did visit and I can't contest the way it is now, but I did. Talk to uh several of the majors and uh in 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 com- commercial vehicle. And uh they were over his head and they have no, because, and I'll tell you why, the the was a comment made in court that. The uppers, the state didn't care how much money and that was not the uh. The consensus of the higher ups. They were very uh concerned about um. The safety of the public and trying to make things work and they were a lot more willing to work with us, I think, at the time than the sergeant was. So. Um, I don't think we have that case now. Uh, we've got a good sergeant down there. Hadn't had no reason to talk to anybody above him. Um, and and he's doing the best he can with what he has and hopefully it continues. Um.
Well, and I'll, I'll go further. I I worked with three sergeants down there before Sergeant Gray was Sergeant Hunt. Worked with them all on that. Us, there is something, and this is something, and I think about it, I would. I think only Commissioner White was on the court when the last time I mentioned this.
But he's probably right. I'm looking around. I think he was right.
Twenty thirteen, the legislature, because this piggybacks on something Commissioner Doggett mentioned a minute ago. Twenty thirteen, the legislature changed, they made a significant change in the commercial overweight violations. That fine used to be two hundred and fifty bucks, five hundred bucks. These trucks ran heavy all the time because what they made up on the extra load was more than enough to offset. And they could live with the CSA points for it to offset what they had to pay in the fine. But they changed that in twenty thirteen. Look at your revenue spikes. That's where you're known for. There were days where I laid thousand, ten thousand dollar fines, fifteen thousand dollar fines on a single guy, on a single company. It happened all the time. Because they weren't used to it. But if you want to get rid of something, tax it or criminalize it. And that's what they did. And so we don't see anywhere near the level of overweight. They're overweight, but they're not overweight by nearly as much as they used to be because they they can't afford the fine. And that was the purpose of it. The purpose of the way station, they're only gonna catch. One out of every ten, one out of every twenty, whatever they're catching, but it's a deterrent. It's designed to increase. Drivers and operators trying to get in compliance. They don't want the CSA points more than they don't want the fine. Every, um, so that's what, that's what's uh, it's a deterrent and so.
Willing therefore your public safety won't.
Right, and the more, the more effective that is, then the safer the roads are.
Appreciate it, Quentin. I'll quit saying anything so you can sit down.
And so I just had. Do you think some of those people calling y'all have it confused with the people that's in Andy's building? Those are licensed and wait officers from Leon County. We found office, office space for them in Madison County.
No, there was a comment made even in court last week about shutting the way station down.
Okay.
That uh.
That was Zoom, right? Well, I mean, the 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 people I've talked to has been very direct.
Oh, yeah.
They got, and you know, like I said, I mean, I I know it's not coming to me. I can't speak for the other four of you, but I know who it's not gonna, so. I'm just being out front and throwing mine at them, so. Anyway, I'm done.
Well, we did find big, find space for the guys in Andy's building in Madison County, which is where they work.
Okay.
So if you hear that. That was all.
They weren't locals?
No.
All right, we still got locals in there?
They're still in there, right, Andy? Yeah, but they're, yeah, the Ranger, the Ranger didn't get. So we're just trying to get them closer to their county. I think we're the only ones that have space for them for a while. All right. Number eighteen, discuss and take action on authorization of sales of fireworks during the the Wally from November fifth through the fourteenth, twenty twenty three.
This was just something that came across my desk from, I think it was, actually it came from TAC. The legislature approved another fire period, um, if the county, for sale of fireworks, I guess. Um, in late November, Dewali is a is a Hindu, I did a little research, it's a little Hindu celebration. Whether anybody opens and does it or not is up to the commissioner's court to approve fireworks during that period. So we.
It's just gonna be hard for me to go along with anything with a firework and I've been on these fire lines for, how long we been out there? I said, you, you picked a bad day to break.
If you're gonna say. That's true, but we can wait if you want to let it rain.
You gonna have to.
Well, I can tell you today, my vote's a no. You bring it back when it's raining.
Bring it back when it's raining. It's probably not a big deal, but it's just.
You know, we we've done that, what was it, a couple of years ago on Texas Independence Day? I think we made it where they can, but nobody.
Nobody, nobody did it.
Yeah.
And so. Well, it's not enough there for probably.
Yeah, probably not enough.
Sound like you got three no's on this end.
Let's just pass on the trend.
All right. Number nineteen, discuss and take action, authorizing precinct three commissioners for purchasing used pneumatic roller. Via auction, commercial dealer or private individual that costs not to exceed thirty thousand.
We, um, we have a small pneumatic roller and um, I actually ended up borrowing one from Brandon. A while back and and then I borrowed one from you and they're nice and big and do a whole lot better than the little tiny one that I have. So I'm starting to look around for one similar to that. So basically this agenda is if I come across one, in fact, in fact, there's one on an auction right now that I'm watching that. I think that ends in October. So I just wanted to get an authorization, authorization to pick up a fixed asset. Um, over five thousand and exceed my ten thousand dollar um, limit if I come across something for this piece of equipment. So that my motion is to um, approve agenda item nineteen as presented.
I'll give you a second.
We're saying it all. Motion case.
Like George.
Number twenty, discuss and take action on facility request twenty twenty-three dash one one seven Carolina Christian camp to place an informational banner promoting Lone Star Lights in front of precinct three facility.
I met with um Lisa and Cherie from um Texas Christian, Carolina Christian camp out there. Last year was their inaugural Lone Star Lights. Um there are tenants was almost eighteen, close to twenty thousand people, mostly from out of towns that came into Walker County. And that was, y'all remember Christmas last year, it rained from the time they stood there, were open, signed up until the day they pulled it back down and they still got almost twenty thousand people. This year they're looking at, hopefully getting thirty to thirty-five thousand people come out there. And one of the comments they had last year was people having difficulty locating the the place. So they asked if they could put a sign um in front of my, in front of my shop in the grass. And um for to do that, I thought I had needed to come to court and just get permission from them. I'm gonna look at Quentin though now.
You can, you can approve it if you choose.
Okay. So my motion is to approve agenda item number twenty as presented.
We're saying it all, if you raise your hand. Motion case. Twenty-one. Present uh present presentation and discussion of the status of Hurricane Harvey grant funds from Grantworth and Blow Engineering. Morning, Jordan.
Good morning, everybody.
I assume you'd let my friend Johnny as well?
Yeah, we've been knowing Johnny for a while.
Commissioner Doggett, I know you had some specific questions for us. Would you like to start with those?
I, not really. We've just been getting reports over the last two or three months and and I appreciate this information. So rather than me try to figure out and not being allowed to visit with these people and ask questions back and forth without being here, I just figured we just all throw it here and y'all walk us through where we're at a few meters.
Okay, so we are pretty close to be completing the originally planned work for this project. This project uh is a grant from the GLO. The GLO, as you know, runs at a glacial pace and they're very picky about everything, which has been really fun for us in a lot of ways. Uh we do have some funds left in this grant. We have a couple of things we'd like your advice on, how you'd like us to move forward. We see some cost overages. Excuse me, for one of these project sites, that's Phelps Creek in precinct four. Um force account labor, so the county's own labor force has been managing that project. And the cost for that has exceeded the originally planned budget, from my understanding, by a pretty significant amount. I'm not on the ground, so I don't know why, why that is. Maybe have some.
Help slab.
Help slab.
Upside.
Lines are hard to, I'm just kidding, that's not. Um hoping you have some idea on how and why that labor had.
The deal thing of engineering uh data was incorrect. We ended up spending a lot more money because it was incorrect.
Okay.
Fair enough.
Yeah, yeah. The other issue is the force account labor as well. That, I'm sure Jordan can speak to more, uh as far as how much was spent on the labor side of things. And whether or not we're wanting to expand funds to pay ours.
Right. So already on this particular or in this precinct, there's been a hundred and sixteen thousand dollars in overages, which were already covered by the county. For this period or this upcoming payment request, we're looking at about two hundred and four thousand dollars in force account labor that we're not planning to ask for reimbursement or, I guess, prepayment by the GLO. But that would be picked up by the county, leaving total grant funds that aren't currently obligated to another contract in the form of um uh retainage or funds that we know that we're going to spend for some other contracts. About a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars left. If the county decides to, they can use those funds to cover most of this overage and use planned funds or excuse me, the county's own fund to do additional work in the county without having all of the administrative and very, very specific rules that the GLO has been applied to that extra work. So be able to do more work for less money if you do it outside of this grant grant contract. Alternatively, if the county, county wants to spend the two hundred and four thousand dollars, a hundred thousand dollars on this current cost overrun on their own, there's about a hundred and seventy-five, excuse me, thousand dollars left to plan additional projects, but the GLO will be very specific on where we can and what we can based on what was already approved for this project.
Okay, that was really fast.
Sorry.
I go fast, but that was.
I'm trying to catch up with you.
My concern on accounting either, doesn't.
Okay, so the, so the green column right now that says grant construction funds remaining, that is what is in the accounts left over right now.
Yes.
Okay, so if we say like in mine, I've got I've only got fifteen thousand five hundred and fifteen dollars in my account. Um if I, if, you know, and I did, when I did roads and that's what I got left over between the two. What other projects would be? If I say, hey, I've got fifteen grand, I would like to do a hydrology hydraulic study on another downstream from there or something.
Is that what we already did on this project in the exact same locations?
We did one in there. That's one of, you know, what are the, what are the limitations we have? Is it strictly from, from two thirty down to the bridge? Is that our scope?
Already gotten approved through, but.
We're pretty limited on what we can use the money for, right?
Right. They'll be real specific on exactly what types of materials you can use, what types of contractors you can use and where you can do that additional work. But they would also include new contracts because I don't think any of our current contracts for labor are still over the minimum. I guess you're.
Looking at it, you, you're the ones that put about a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars.
If we did. Yeah, but if it has to be spent on them three locations, we can't get outside of those locations. You've already done the drains and everything on it.
Right.
Right?
There, there may be some minor range improvements we may and clean out the ditches. You know, put some slow paving down areas if we need to or some eddles. It'd be fairly limited scope, especially with the right of way issues.
Yeah. All three positions. Got very little right of way anyway. And so, but y'all coming in, we actually did the, but the drain is pretty well.
All right. So the roads that y'all did though, your knife river contract roads. So help me out on this one. Y'all have gone back. They've gone back to those ones. And they've done crack sealing on those roads from one end all the way to the other.
They did some crack sealing just as a warranty issue without charging us.
Okay, but we did some. Have we all done crack sealing on those new roads yet or is that?
Well, we need to do it.
Because you haven't done it yet, but they could. But are they, are they your roads now? Are they out of warranty? Are they y'all's roads?
Well, yeah, there was our roads to start off with, the way I understand it.
But knife river came back. So could they go back to those roads and do repairs?
Potentially, the GLO is going to look at that as rework and they will not pay for rework. So they will insist that the original contractor, if there's still under warranty, take care of that. Um and that's probably a conversation the county can have with, excuse me, with that contractor. Uh just because that is fairly recent that that was completed. But if it, if it does look like this is work that was done and needs to be redone, that's not going to be a qualifying expense.
Okay.
And you got a question.
You're saying you got a two hundred and four thousand dollar overrun. You have a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars left over. Right?
Correct.
Total.
Uh unrelated.
So the hundred and seventy-five thousand that's left over is applied to the two hundred and four.
Then you have negative twenty-nine, nine, twenty-four.
And that hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars would, if it wasn't applied has to come from.
The two oh four would come from the county. The one seventy-five will come from grants. That's what's remaining in our grant budget.
No, no, what I'm saying, they didn't apply the hundred and seventy-five to the two oh four. It's what you're discussing.
Okay.
Right? Right? Then they would have to come up with a hundred and seventy-five out of their own funds.
No, some of this is forced labor, but you're taking that out, right?
Right. Anything that's been billed to the GLO so far has been taken out already.
I mean, so it's direct expenses so far, no forced labor involved in it.
Right. This is funds that do not have planned work associated with.
Well, so, so how did we get this far in deep and not know that? I mean, if we're two hundred and four thousand dollars in the hole.
Well, I mean, it's all with a help slab out there, right?
Help slab because all the prong man on slab.
And my understanding was that it's not the county's intent to charge that force account additional labor to the grant in the first place. I just, we saw the report on that labor to the GLO.
Well, I would say there's no option there at this point. I mean, there's no force. Yeah, because I mean, if we're in the hole, we're in the hole, but.
I know the intent was always for you to cover that labor on the side, right? So it's, I mean, the labor's already been paid for, right?
Labor's already come out of my budget, yes.
Right. So it's already been paid for by the county. So then the question is, do we want to use the remaining funds, the one certain size, apply it to that as reimbursement? Done. Or do we want to try to use these funds elsewhere on projects that are contained within the areas that.
If we, if we took the one seventy-five and we covered the, stay with me on this one before y'all lose it. Um if we take the one seventy-five and we, if we paid it and paid down the two oh four to just the thirty thousand, we would suck up. Once allocated to precinct four, that would become Walker County money that he could reallocate to our precincts. Split the money up equally.
Right. And then you can spend that money.
What's your thoughts on that?
That's what I was trying to say, if the, if you didn't apply the hundred and seventy-five over to cover that, then whatever money you don't apply, you're still gonna have all the restrictions at the ground.
Well, I don't want to give a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars back. I don't want to do that.
No.
Right.
I don't want to do that.
I'd like that.
To the GLO?
I'd like to have it in my budget.
That's what I'm saying. If we take the one seventy-five.
You won't be able to keep it, don't worry.
We cover, we do the one seventy-five. If that's, if that's the way to get the money into the county coppers, then so one seventy-five divided by four is almost, it's about what, forty-five thousand, forty-three thousand dollars a precinct?
This just don't even sound halfway legal to me. I'm gonna have to talk to my legal man in the back.
You know what? It's the same thing it did, was the same thing we did with the ARPA money. You know, we, we went through.
That's put it in the general fund and move.
And then you move.
Will keeps looking at me. I'm a little concerned.
I think it's totally legit. I think it's, I think it's the way to do it. Being that y'all, that the restraints, I mean, I was hoping we could say we could take this money and do like, I mean, I have drainage areas. I'd love to have drainage studies done in. I would love to have them and I need them in three or four good neighborhoods.
We should look at new grants.
And absolutely. And we have, I think we have one sitting down there now that we have a study in that one. But there's other areas that we need to have those in, but if we can't do that and if we can't add to a project we've already got and if, and all the restrictions are there, then if if we can get the money into the county coppers and split it out equally, I'm, I could be talked into that.
I'll probably get there, but I don't feel comfortable at this moment. And I hadn't heard Quentin say nothing too much.
These are already re- reimbursable expenses from the GLO. So from a grant standpoint, no shame. Nobody's gonna be worried about it.
Right. No big deal.
Like driving a trailer without a light, they really don't.
Just cut around this way.
I do that every day, James.
No, you need to take Huckle and drive on this.
Some, some reason this just ain't feeling a hundred percent right.
Well, the, the good thing about this is, again, do something like that, then we could take that money and go back and fix the minor problems that we have already from the roads.
Yeah, I mean, I've got some, you know.
I mean, you got cracks soon. That, that's a whole nother conversation that we'll have, but um we're gonna have cracks soon before this one.
Yeah, 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 before you lose them.
I, I mean, it's money that we could apply back to uh to fixing that.
Put it back in your project where it belongs. Yeah. And I've got cracks on coons and plantation that I need to go fix and stuff like that. So we're really putting it back into the projects that.
But you know, most of the money goes precinct two, right, anyway, because it's mostly.
Johnny didn't spend them both, though.
Judge, may I ask a question?
Yes, ma'am. Ms. Allen.
Please.
Uh, we we currently have in our uh community development block grant fund a negative cash balance of two hundred six thousand, three hundred and six dollars. Is this money the same as this two hundred and four thousand overage we're talking about? Or is that money that we've spent and not being reimbursed for yet? Is that additional money that we're due from GLO?
I don't know where you guys go.
What she, but no, she would never have seen this two hundred and four thousand. We would not have written a check for this money. This is in-house, in-kind, in-kind labor. So this is, there's no, there's no county money in that two hundred and four, three forty-seven. We haven't written a check for that. So if we're two hundred something thousand upside down, we probably need to find out why we're two hundred something thousand upside.
Well, the GLO and Mr. Patricia will know this, when they paid Vulcan, they was months and months and months paying. You know, so they do not pay timely at all. And that's one of the reasons, and I'll go ahead and go further, is if we keep a healthy reserve, because we had to pay all this upfront. You know, and.
And they'll wait on reimbursement.
Yeah.
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 Same way we did with slot and all.
Right, yeah, yeah. So. Okay.
That's a good question.
Patricia, I don't know the answer to your question.
Well, it can't, I mean, it can't be. We do know the answer. It's not. It's not. Yeah, it's not. That's not.
No, that's reimbursement. We're, we're waiting on.
So there's outstanding reimbursements still coming evidently that we're still sitting on.
Right. We haven't even been allowed to submit our, our current draw, which has quite a few invoices in it, because we're waiting on the extension and the additional funds allocation for the GLO. Which has been a remarkable way, way to do it.
Okay.
Is, is so that entire two hundred and four, three forty-seven overrun is all force account.
Force account labor and equipment only. The rentals are included in draw eleven.
Yeah.
And which are in your packets, but not in this cute little picture.
And for what it's worth, it appears that if the hundred and seventy-four thousand dollars is turned in as labor and equipment for Roden Bridge Precinct Four, that would need to be exactly where that money went. Now, whether or not court decides to do a budget adjustment uh outside of that money would be a discussion for court at a later date, but the money needs to be applied as requested. It's my opinion.
That incorrect from grant standpoint.
Yeah, yeah, that keeps it clean. We could, we could transfer the money and pay the one seventy-five oh fifty-three. Twenty-five.
So that will be the motion to pay, make the motion to use the one seventy-five oh fifty-three twenty-five to cover the cost overrun two oh four, three forty-seven.
This is a discussion only item.
Yes, you might have had action.
Oh, this is discussion only. I'm sorry. I thought it was wide open.
I didn't done the same thing, so let you wait for it.
Well, that's what needs.
Okay, so, so.
And then we can do, do what we need to later, the budget adjustment.
I mean, I make that, we, we can't make a, a, we can't make a, a motion and a thing, but we can definitely get a consensus before we move on with this thing. Um is, are you, is that something that this court is open to? Is to allocate that money to the overrun and then allocate it back at a later court date?
Back to precinct two.
Right, one and two and, yeah.
I, I am uncomfortable to allocate it with the second half of that motion to allocate it back. I think.
Yeah, we're not, that won't be part of the motion, Patricia. You're right. It's gonna be two things, probably one meeting. And then once we get the, once we get the reimbursement back, the, the actual check shows up, then that, then that's another agenda and what we want to do with it at that time.
Um I, I'm, I'm not even comfortable with that. I think the motion needs to be whatever you want to apply it. That money needs to be applied there. And then if court has other budget amendments they want to make, that needs to be considered separately.
Yeah.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, that's what we're talking about.
You can get a consensus of the court.
Yeah, it's not an action item today.
Yeah. So, okay.
Okay.
If that's the road we're going down, I go, that's the road I go down.
Yeah.
I think it's the best.
The majority of it's wrongies if, if he's willing to move forward and Brandon ain't gonna try to hold it hostage.
Well, I mean, there's three of us I know. Take it away from them. We got no problem with it.
That'll be roads, so y'all duke it out.
There you go.
The only other thing that has been disco- uh discussed by the court, and I don't know if that's eligible under this money or not, was the improvements at the storm shelter uh that was talked about as an alternative project.
I think that's in the next budget, the next, the next grant we have out there right now. It's a part of that one. So we, yes, that, that's not part of this one right now. Us, this discussion, I think we, I think we have an idea what we want to do going forward.
Yeah.
So often we know with that summary and well, work on getting a draw that includes that two oh four for reimbursement. Um and a different update for the monitoring GLO saga that has been a delight for all of us as well. Um thank you again for taking my call a couple of days ago. Uh my CEO and the powers that be at Grantworks have opened up a dialogue with the Texas Commissioner, um excuse me, General Land Commissioner Don Buckingham, and they are working closely to develop a very specifically worded letter that will help Hopefully get the county's concerns of uh higher than the monitoring and auditing department at the GLO, so that we can be. Heard and have a more logical discussion than has happened so far via all the letters back and forth, but. I don't have that letter for you yet, but as soon as I have approval on it, I will send it to you for review.
Sounds good.
Alright, alright, thank you.
Appreciate it.
You good?
Covered it pretty well.
Alright, appreciate it, guys. Thank you.
Alright, number twenty-two, discuss and take action on Texas Association of Counties. Walker County Liability Renewal for fiscal year twenty twenty-three through twenty twenty-four for Walker County coverage. At a cost of two hundred and six thousand eight hundred and fifty-four dollars and for the twelfth and two-seventy-eighth judicial. District CSCD coverage at a cost of three thousand five hundred and fifty-six dollars for policy revisions as noted. Any questions on that?
Oh. I just had one. Um. The list of equipment listed is vehicle that drive down the road with a license plate. Uh, so, and I think y'all, you and Lucy had talked about, but I didn't really get her. I I left before I got the answer from that was, what about the equipment that rides down the road without a license plate? What? We have a separate policy.
That one was passed, y'all approved that in June, I believe.
Okay, alright.
And property is on a separate one. This is auto liability.
Okay.
And it has increased from one eighty-three up to the two oh six. That is just.
Like it.
Yes, correct.
Alright, thank you, Alex. Appreciate it. I made the motion. Go ahead, I'm sorry.
One question, um. So there is a a vehicle, and I guess I'll get with Ally later about it that I have a question about. But the the process, I'm assuming, we we've changed the process in how we're. Even making claims with this, I'm assuming. I I mean, are we still going? So it's still, yeah, is it still going to you solely or or to your office? And then going to purchasing or is it strictly with your office?
It's gonna be a cooperation of both.
Purchasing has been making the claims as they did before. We were just not being notified. As far as it going to insurance, I'm the one that has been corrected all the discrepancies and. Made it up to date as for what y'all are specifically approving today was the drivable vehicles on the road.
So so if we have some, I have a rent, what happens?
Uh, they need to notify my, our office, judge's office and purchasing. And then uh Ms. Cheryl has been doing the claim and then we go back and forth with tech. And we're all looked in on the same email.
Alright, I I this is the the one I've got a question about. It's no big deal. It's just the the actual price on it. So I'll I'll catch it sometime later.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Moving second all, if they raise your hand. Motion carries. Number twenty-three, discuss and take action on appointment of Walker County Representatives. Uh, Judge Cole Christian and the reappointment of Commissioner Ronnie White. And Trey Wharton to the city of Huntsville Tax and Increment Reinvestment Zone, number one tiers, board of directors for two-year term.
Motion, we accept number twenty-three. You're such a kind guy.
I'll say it. Moved in second, all, if they raise your hand.
It hurts.
Motion carries. Twenty-four, discuss and take action to ratify Texas Department of Motor Motor Vehicle. In possession of optional fees calendar year twenty twenty-four.
I mean, I've called away in all this.
Okay.
Does this, there's a uh. Deadline on when that gets submitted. It got missed inadvertently and uh. So the judge was in a situation where he had to go ahead and sign off on it and submit it by the deadline. There is no change whatsoever, but it's been done in the previous years.
Okay.
Motion to approve.
But.
Moving second all, if they raise your hand. Motion carries. Twenty-five, discuss and take action on recompete pilot program grant application. I put a copy of the. Information in there for you. This is just kinda, it's kinda like those tech hubs we did the other day, but this is for um. You can do infrastructure, uh, you can help people relocate, all that. It's gonna be a five hundred thousand dollar. Two-year program to begin with, and then once you get that, you're eligible for a fifty million dollar grant. Same stipulations, so as the tech hub, this is just based on. Bringing businesses back that were once here before. So.
So is it something we do here at the county or what?
So we're working with Sam Houston on this to do some of the educational side of it, because we don't have a grant writer. But they're helping with the application on it. Um, we're looking, we're focused on the timber industry, sawmills, um, bringing in. Uh, a facility to help make laminated beams, structures, um, grow in some. Hydrogen capture facilities, that kind of stuff. So we had to do a whole proposal on it, but this is just to get started and then we'll have two years to work a big proposal up. So.
Okay.
That's your motion.
That's my motion.
Sorry.
Moving second all, if they raise your hand. She carries. Twenty-six, discuss and take action on distribution, dis- disturbance of of unclaimed capital. Credits in the amount of seventeen thousand six oh one and ten cents.
Is that what we usually give to Sam Houston?
It is, yeah, those uh small business.
Yes. That's what we're doing again.
If you make that motion.
That's my motion.
I'll second that.
Moving seconded, all in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries. I'm gonna turn it over to Mr. White.
He's just booking.
He led him out.
Alright, be safe. Alright, number twenty-seven. Discuss and take action on Ty Phillips' request for variance to section five of the Walker County subdivision regulations. Regarding amending flats to be allowed to proceed under section two three two point oh one oh. The Texas Local Government Code to convey portions of platted lot BI. BI, whatever you call it, meets and bounds description for lot sixteen C of the Buckhorn Acres subdivision. Thomas Robert survey. Comma, I'll put that in there for y'all. A dash. Seven seven one Buckhorn Acres Drive Precinct Four, Andy.
Okay, this is the original, if you guys will remember, several weeks ago, we did a two thirty-two. Or a order of the same subdivision. Um, same family involved. As a matter of fact, this is another tract that they have. That was divided. This is the original plat you're looking at here, you know, lot sixteen C, showing a little over eight acres.
Yeah, there it is right there.
This is sort of what it looks like. They all understand right. This is a five acre track here in the middle. Three and one point five six, I know math, that's not eight, right? Well, the deed for this term says that when they resurfaced it, they found out that the original. And that nine point five six was the actual, it's in the, it's in the meets and bounds. So what they're requesting is this original five acre track was divided out of sixteen C in nineteen ninety-six. Um, when it was divided effectively. Three tracks, piece in the middle. They're asking for the court to allow each amount descriptions for the three tracks. And and for those properties to be allowed to be conveyed or be conveyed without having to file replat. So similar to what they, similar application what they had done before, that was for two. This is for three, the, like I said, the the original split heard in nineteen ninety-six. Which would, for for trivia sake, was the year that we adopted the last subdivision policy that we had in formal yet now. Obviously, quite a long time ago.
So are they selling it now or what's going on with it? What's the, why are they?
They haven't mentioned to me that they're in the process of a sale, but I remember it's uh, they they had, they cleaned up that other one. And it was a permit issue that brought it up. Cleaned up. Now they, they know they need to get it cleaned up.
What do we do on that one?
It was, the other one was.
Yeah.
Move to approve.
I think I'm okay with it. Um, and I I'm on second to motion, but. Generally, we exempt the big survey and plat for. When we have, this guy's got a hundred and twenty acres and I want to cut one acre out of the corner. This is a nine acre track being cut into three pieces.
Yes.
So in fact, we did one before, just a while ago. It's hard to say you can't do this one now, but. I don't, I don't think I want us, for that to become our method of operation.
So the the intent of the replat is now the replat. The original plat. You know, uh, we're not a replay record, the original plat becomes sort of rough.
Right.
Replay process is intended to keep the original plat. Uh, any revisions of record so that they can be tracked.
Okay.
This particular revision is fairly rarely used by the court.
Right.
It's usually have been used in the past by previous courts. When there was an old transfer of property, um. Um, that happened thirty years ago or something like that, and they're trying some good, great way to clean it up. The court has used that tool in their toolbox, but.
Yeah.
I I don't, I don't disagree with yourself. And uh, the replat and plat process is to keep everything up and records up and everything coming to make code. Because there was no plat originally granted, if they were to file a replat on this, it would come in under our current standards.
Yeah.
And they would have to meet the current standard for replat.
Yeah.
Means they'd be coming back for redemption.
Right.
They may be. I don't know. This this track was actually the way it was divided off of the road. They have frontage for all the tracks.
Right.
Probably have, they may have some, some, some definite issues and stuff like that, but it's better than than some I've seen for sure.
Okay, well, I'm good with the second up.
Any more discussion?
Yes.
I got a motion in a second. All four raise your right hand. Motion carries. Alright, number twenty-eight. Discuss and take action on right of way acquisition report for Colt Morgan Christian and Kelsey Marie Christian, eighty-eight point five oh acre track on Loma Road. In the John Cray survey, A one oh nine precinct two. Oh, that's actually mine. Colt and Christie, uh, Kelsey's mom had actually give part of this right of way many years ago.
Yeah.
And this is just the rest of the right of way where she stopped to get us through that bottom. We're fixing to actually put a tank car covert in and it will assist us also in doing that and get us right away.
That that spot that always floods.
Yeah, yeah, right in that bottom where it floods. And that thing uh uh washed out all back in one of the hurricanes. What was it? Ashland, I forgot, but. And we didn't have a covert to put in it big enough, and we put a small covert in it, and luckily it's been dry ever since then. So we got the covert to go. We just need some right of way to be able to work.
Oh, okay.
Tracks, alright, which, unless we talk about that, the low area.
It will be.
Alright.
My motion is to approve this and it's got eighteen hundred and thirteen feet approximately. To be taken. Believe if I remember right, we're doing the clearing and we're paying them by the foot.
I'll second that motion.
So we have it on the, we have it on the agenda as the, the, you know, right of way acquisition. And then followed by the acceptance.
Right. So this is acquisition report.
Okay, I second your motion.
Alright, we got a motion in a second. All four, raise your right hand. Motion carries. Alright, number twenty-nine, discuss and take action on acceptance of right of way easement from Colt Morgan Christian and Kelsey Marie Christian. Eighty-eight point five oh acre track on Loma Road in the John Crane survey, A one oh nine precinct two. I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second that.
Got a motion in a second. All four, raise your right hand. Motion carries. Alright, number thirty. Discuss and take action on right of way acquisition report for Colt Morgan Christian. Kelsey Marie Christian, eighty-seven point four seven acre track. On Loma Road in the John Crane survey, A one oh nine precinct two. Part of the same right of way, just extending on, it's just two different tracks. So it's got, uh, let me catch up. Fourteen hundred and what, man? Fourteen hundred and ninety feet associated with it. That's my motion to approve.
On one side of the road or both sides of the road?
Same side, runs on one side.
I'll second that motion.
Got a motion in a second. All four, raise your right hand. Motion carries. Number thirty-one. Discuss and take action on acceptance of right of way easement from Colt Morgan Christian and Kelsey Marie Christian. Eighty-seven point four seven acre track on Loma Road. In the John Crane survey, A one oh nine precinct two, uh, same thing, just except for the right of way.
Alright.
My motion is to prove.
I'll second it.
And a motion in a second. All four, raise your right hand. Motion carries.
Okay.
Number thirty-two. Discuss and take action on allocation of additional funds for engineering service contracts and.
Um. Better year for a new job. Thirty-five thousand dollars. But I hate to come back again, but uh, this will carry needs proved. This year.
Okay.
And at the end of the year, I guess we can come up with some numbers to see if we're charging enough to cover this.
I mean, with the number of the mountain, like I said, this is my highest expenditure year on. I still take here on uh, on the out page.
Yeah.
Where's it funded from?
Yeah, Patricia. General Fund contingency or company. I think.
Miss Patricia.
Uh, yes, uh, that's, that's good.
General Fund contingency.
Well, we got a motion.
I made the motion to approve agenda item thirty-two, an amount of thirty-five thousand dollars get paid for from General Fund contingency.
And a motion in two seconds. All four, raise your right hand. Motion carries.
Okay.
Anybody got anything for the betterment of the court or the worse of the court? Most time I don't add that part, but I do.
Remember.
I guess we got nothing. We're going to adjourn. Is that ten forty-two?
Yes.
Four, forty-three.
Ten forty-three? This turn forty-three, we go forty.